I'd like to start the meeting off by welcoming everybody here for tonight. It is to the special meeting of council for the local improvement district. My name is Peter Turgeon. I'm the mayor of West St. Paul and will be the chairperson of tonight's meeting. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to thank you for all your participations. I ask that everyone be patient as we go through this meeting tonight. I'm going to officially begin the special meeting of council now by calling this meeting to order. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda of the meeting be adopted or circulated. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Bichetti moves. Councilor Campbell seconds it. I will start off with some introductions for this evening. I would like to introduce the members of council and administration in attendance. I have Peter Campbell to the right of me and George Bichetti, to this, Councilor Bichetti to the second of me. Next to Councilor Campbell is our CIO, Dave Wardrop. Then we have Director of Infrastructure, Dave Romano. Next to them is Crystal Laney. Laney is next. Laney is next, okay. Laney is our, she's the municipal legislative official. And then next to Laney is Crystal Shahira. We also have our engineering professionals from StanTech to answer any questions. Managing Director Cameron Dick. And Senior Project Engineer Brent Ramsden. And then next to them, we have Travis Parsons, the General Manager of Manitoba Water Services Board, is also present this evening. I'd like to again thank you for being here tonight to answer questions for the residents. Councilor Pacutan and Councilor Kleber send a regret that they are unable to attend this evening. Before going into this meeting, I would just like to take a few minutes to explain what we'll be discussing tonight, which is the wastewater LID proposal. We're then going on to explain the public hearing process. The municipality is continuing its efforts to extend wastewater services to all of the properties within the Red River Corridor designated by the province of Manitoba in 2009. Replacement or modification of failing septic fields are prohibited within this area. Homes with failing wastewater systems will be required by the provincial regulations to install holding tanks. Local Improvement Bylaw 2023-11 is a bylaw to authorize expenditure and borrowing of money for the installation of wastewater sewer pipes, lift stations, and force main, including surface restoration as a local improvement in the area known as Hiawatha Avenue, Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Nye Avenue, Baldock Street, and Evelyn Avenue. The project will be funded through the Manitoba Water Services Board, with the province contributing 50% of the cost to a maximum of $3.6 million. Council has committed an additional $512,317 to the project that the municipality receives through the Provincial Strategic Infrastructure Fund, as well as interest that will be incurred on these two months. Local Improvement District will be created for the municipality, shared to be paid by the 114 benefiting properties. The municipality will continue to pursue other sources of grant funding to lessen the cost of the affected properties. It is important to bring this opportunity to our residents to consider knowing we are not likely to ever get a better price for you. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive representations from the residents who are affected by the local improvement plan. We have many people here tonight. We have taken the time to come and have registered to speak. It is our goal to hear from each and every one of you tonight. I would ask that each person be as concise as possible in their comments. If your position or the information you want to share to council is the same as others' speakers who have spoken before, you can indicate this by identifying the key points of your argument. I want to provide a meaningful, respectful, for all who wish to hear, be here tonight, regardless of the position on the matter. Respectful conduct means no interruptions, hacking, applause, signs, or size, or any kind of disruptive or intimidating behavior. These kinds of behaviors do not promote a respectful environment. Anyone who behaves in this manner may be asked to leave the meeting. I will also request that you refrain from side conversations, as they can be disruptive to the proceedings, especially with so many people here this evening. You are free to enter and exit the meeting as needed, but please do so as quietly as possible. The meeting will be filmed and will be made available to you on our YouTube channel. And as a reminder, please put all personal devices on silent. The public hearing will be called to order, and then the CIO will provide a PowerPoint presentation regarding the project. At the end of the presentation, we will hear from those presenting who wish to speak either in favor of, in objection to, or asking more information about the proposed local improvement plan. Our municipal officer will read each name that has been pre-registered for support or opposition, and the names of those who have registered their names on the public hearing signing sheet tonight to confirm your position. At the time, if you want to ask a question, you may do so. Person speaking must address the chair. If they have questions that they think the administration or engineering should answer, they should raise them when called upon to speak. Council may ask for clarification on any comments made. Again, there should be no interruptions while a person is making a presentation. Any questions presented by a presenter will be addressed following each person's presentation. As per the procedural bylaw, the chair has the right to limit the time taken by a person to 10 minutes after which council may ask the question of the person. All questions must be channeled through the chair of the hearing. When all presentations have been completed, the public hearing will close. If the hearing is not completed today, either because we run out of time or further information is to be provided, we will then adjourn the hearing. If there are objections of 2/3 or more of the potentially affected property, council may approve the plan or propose a similar project for at least two years. If there are objections from less than 2/3 of the potentially affected properties, first reading may be given to Bylaw 2023-11, which is a bylaw to proceed with the local improvement plan as presented or a future meeting of council. With these comments, I would like to read the resolution to open the public hearing. Be it resolved that this meeting of council recessed for the purpose of holding a public hearing of Bylaw 2023, local improvement area known as Hiawatha Avenue, Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Nye Avenue, Baldock Street, and Evelyn Avenue. Could I have a mover, please? Council Campbell moves. Council Bichetti seconds it. I will now ask our CIO to...
Can I call for a vote?
All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. I will now ask our CIO to do the presentation.
As Mayor indicated, my name is Dave Wardrop. I'm the CIO of West St. Paul, and I'm here to present on the wastewater sewer servicing plan for the areas known as Nye, Baldock, Evelyn, and Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha. So, as some background to the project itself, the project involves the installation of sewer service on the two particular subcatchments, one that is comprised of Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn Streets, and a second subcatchment consisting of Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha. The total extent of the project is to service 114 properties in the two subcatchments. Sewer service will be installed for each lot from the sewer main to the property line. And a sewage pumping station is also proposed for the properties in the Kennebec, Hiawatha, and Minnehaha subcatchment. So, the reason we're proposing the project itself is that in 2009, the province of Manitoba established the Red River Corridor designated area. And what this means is that the area, within this area, the replacement or modification of failing septic fields is prohibited. So homes with failing wastewater systems will be required by the provincial regulation to install holding tanks if a wastewater sewer is not in place. So this is a regulation that has been imposed by the province of Manitoba, and this is, this project's intent is to get in front of that issue, to deal with that issue in a collective community manner. The municipality is making service available to all residents now, so that tanks aren't required as fields fail. So as fields fail and tanks are required, people will be able to join onto the sewer system. It's not a matter of, they're gonna, people are gonna install their tanks, they're gonna install septic fields, and then a pipe is gonna come in after the fact. This lets people get in in front of it. So what's the cost of this? The project itself is budgeted at approximately $6.2 million. For that, however, the Manitoba Water Services Board is providing a grant to cover 50% of the cost up to a maximum of $3.6 million. So a local improvement district will then be created to fund the municipal portion of that cost, and the 114 benefiting properties will contribute to that cost. The municipality has pursued other grants and sources of funding to lessen the cost of the affected properties. And so this includes an additional $512,000 from the Provincial Strategic Infrastructure Fund, and it also includes accrued interest on these funds that were advanced from Manitoba Water Services Board. And as previously indicated by the mayor, Executive Director of Manitoba Water Services Board, Travis Parsons is here with us tonight. So, the interest funds themselves, we're estimating at approximately $50,000 at the end of August. They're probably closer to $75,000 now, accruing interest as time progresses. So these are improvements to the costing and reductions to the costing that we've been able to make on the project since originally proposed earlier this year. So when the, the cost of, the important thing to remember is when the cost of installing and emptying wastewater, or wastewater tanks itself is considered, the installation of the sewer improvements is more cost-effective to residents over the long haul. So when the cumulative cost of emptying your tank and replacing your tank and maintaining your fields is considered over the life of your property versus installing a sewer and making a connection itself, when the operating costs are considered, this is the more cost-effective solution for the municipality, for the community, over the long haul. So there's environmental benefits, there's economic benefits involved in this. The proposed project itself has two subcatchment areas. There's, as I indicated earlier, there's the Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn subcatchment area, where the flow in this subcatchment area is entirely by gravity, where a gravity sewer runs down Baldock, then down Nye to the main street trunk, and another gravity sewer runs down Evelyn to the main street trunk as well by gravity. The second subcatchment is in the Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha area itself, and it involves a gravity flow from Minnehaha north at about the, just about the 1/3 point, gravity flow to the south, or, pardon me, to the west, and then gravity flow to the east, and then south, to a lift station at the south side of Kennebec. There's also, from there, there's also a short gravity portion on Hiawatha to the west as well. The lift station itself pumps via force main down Kennebec, Hiawatha, and drops into a manhole at a high point on Hiawatha, where it then flows by gravity and ultimately discharges into the main street trunk, south to the north end sewage treatment plant in Winnipeg. So each area has been costed separately. The Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn area, with a total of 54 properties, has been costed separately from the Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha area, which has a total of 60 properties, but as indicated also has a sewage pumping station requirement, which is needed to move the wastewater from a lower elevation to a higher elevation, so then it can flow by gravity into the, to the main street trunk. So what is the cost to residents of the proposal? Well, as indicated, there are different servicing costs for residents in each area. The total cost of the project is split between the two areas. For the Hiawatha, Minnehaha, and Kennebec area, the total cost of the project is just under $3.8 million. That's the projected cost today. The projected cost of the Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn Avenue improvements are under, just under $2.4 million for a total project cost of just under $6.2 million. When we subtract the 50% amount from that for the Manitoba Water Services Board funding, which if you recall was 50% of the project cost up to a maximum of $3.6 million, when you reduce the Provincial Strategic Structure Fund funding of approximately $512,000, and subtract again interest accrued on the project, the total cost of the project to ratepayers is in around the $2.5 million mark. What does that mean for each area? $2.5 million over a 20-year amortization and a 7.775% interest rate results in an annual payment for the Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha area of approximately $160,000, and an annual payment for the Nye, Baldock, Evelyn area of approximately $91,000, maybe $191,500. It's important to understand, though, that this number, this 7.775%, is a conservative estimate. Market rates now for the municipality are closer to 5.775%, but under the recommendation of municipal relations, provincial municipal relations, they're recommending that calculations be made for forecasting on a conservative basis and presume, given today's environment, that we see escalation of interest rates of approximately 2% between now and project completion. Whether or not that materializes or not, your guess is as good as mine, but it's factored into these costs. If the interest rates in fact come in less than that, the annual payment to each of these areas will be less as well. So that is a conservative estimate, is the gist of that. So, on an individual property basis, the cost to residents in the Hiawatha, Kennebec, and Minnehaha areas, and the Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn area are broke down as shown. So residents upon, an important point here is, is that charges will not be finalized and levied until the project is complete. These charges, these costs, will not happen, if third reading occurs and the project is approved and the project proceeds, these charges won't happen right away. They won't happen at tendering. These charges won't happen until the filing, the final borrowing bylaw is in place, which will be after construction. So these charges, these annual charges, or a cash front charge, whichever resident chooses to make, realistically probably wouldn't be in the area of perhaps 18 months to two years away, because by the time the tendering goes out, the approval is made, the tendering goes out, the construction occurs, and the bylaw is finalized, there'll be a substantive amount of time before these charges occur. So the charges will be finalized and levied upon completion of the project, not upon approval of the project, not upon tendering of the project. And once that occurs, once the project is completed, residents will have 30 days to provide written notification to select either a cash or financing option. So residents at that point could pay the cash amount upfront, or they could finance over 20 years of an estimated annual payment of just under $2,700 for the Hiawatha, Kennebec, Minnehaha area, and about $1,700 for the Nye, Baldock, Evelyn area. Again, this is, this is subject to the project coming in at just under $6.2 million and having interest rates of 7.775%. If the project comes in lower, if interest rates are lower, the pricing will be more favorable for residents. This pricing, though, puts in a cap. If the pricing comes in higher, the municipality now has an obligation to make up the difference. What other costs residents will be looking at? Well, there'll be a buy-in charge levied by the city Winnipeg, where residential properties currently have a one-time buy-in charge of $3,100. That's, that price itself, though, increases with time and can be expected to increase with time. Realistically, when the project's completed and people buy in, realistically when they're ready to connect and buy in, that price will be what it is. I can almost assure you, it's not gonna be less expensive. And so that price will continue to increase over time, but that will be an additional cost, which is today, $3,100, and it'll be what it'll be when residents decide to connect. It also pays for wastewater treatment capacity, this pays for wastewater treatment capacity at the city, and it'll be charged on the first utility bill connected, after connecting to the wastewater system. So that'll be a fee when connection is, when one decides to connect. There's also sewer service and piping connection cost as well, so there's the installation of the connection between your house and the municipal sewer as well. And that has to be completed by a licensed contractor, and septic and holding tanks must be decommissioned once the connections have been made. So once connected, septic fields and septic tanks have to be decommissioned, taken out of service, and there's a cost associated with that. Typically, this cost, this work costs in the range of $10,000 to $15,000. So that is a summary of the project and the costs associated with the project. And with that, I've completed my presentation.
I'll ask now our MLO to provide us with the names of those that are in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Marilyn Baskeer registered for.
Do you want to speak? Are you here? Okay.
We have Ryan and Carrie Yakel registered for.
Are they present? No? Okay. If you're present, just raise your hand.
And we have Carol Vandell registered for. We have Sylvia Pollak registered for. Pat Zabrowski.
Did you want to speak, Pat? I saw your hand go. That's right? Okay.
Those are the residents registered for.
Do we have names for those that are objective?
Would anyone like to add their name as in support of the project? And your name?
Rodney Future.
Oh, I'm sorry, you might have to come to the microphone for me.
Rodney Future.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch it.
Rodney Future, okay. Rodney Future, right?
Thank you.
Address?
For Wawa.
And I saw another hand. And your name, please?
Lucy Forlana.
Thank you.
And your address? Lucy? Your address, sorry.
Hold on.
Which number?
19.
19? Thank you.
And is there anyone else that would like to register in support? Then I'll carry on with those registered in opposition. We have Gary Galwan.
Please come forward.
Okay. Right? I have an email sent by me on October 31st to the Minister of Municipalities of Manitoba and to the Premier's office. Dear Minister, I understand it is a chaotic time at the legislature due to the upcoming transfer of power as a result of the provincial election of October 3rd, 2023. However, 114 residents in Minnehaha Avenue, Kennebec Street, Hiawatha Avenue, Nye Avenue, Evelyn, and Baldock Street of West St. Paul are also dealing with their own chaotic event. The town hall meeting held on October 5th concerning the proposed LID bylaw 2023-11. The municipality of West St. Paul is currently proposing West St. Paul bylaw 2023-11. The municipality asked the 114 property owners to forward their concerns to the municipality by October 3rd, so that they could provide answers to at the October 5th town hall meeting. Unfortunately, the municipality did not provide any answers at all. Instead, their 35-minute presentation was just a repeat of previous presentation for bylaw 2023-07. The only new information provided was the following. One, they revised the property owner's cost of installation. Two, the financing over the 20-year term has increased from 7.4% to 7.775%. Three, the water meter costs have been changed. Originally, meter and installation was $600. Now property owners pay $358 for the meter, as well as all installation costs. The most upsetting aspect of the town hall meeting is that the municipality did not answer any of the questions submitted by property owners by the October 3rd deadline. How are property owners expected to make an informed decision regarding this bylaw without knowing all the facts? Following is a list of present levies in place for all new residential homes built in the municipality, and this was provided to me by Lainey Shaw on September 11th. For a single-family dwelling, $4,900 capital levy, $1,200 rec and green space, $400 admin, $2,500 sewer reserve fund, $4,500 water reserve fund for a total of $13,500. For a residential multifamily dwelling, it would be $3,000 capital lot levy, $1,200 rec and green space, $200 administration levy, $2,500 sewer reserve fund, $34,5150 water reserve fund for a total of $10,351. Also, I was advised in terms of development fees, they are intended to be used towards the increased costs associated with providing services and infrastructure as a result of more people and businesses moving into the municipality from which the fees are collected. Examples of appropriate uses of these funds would be hiring more staff, expanding recreation services, purchasing additional roadwork equipment, et cetera. At the town hall meeting, Mr. Dave Wardrop, CIO of West St. Paul, continued to speak about general revenues of the municipality. However, the general revenues of the municipality result from two streams. However, the general revenues of the municipality result from two streams. One, the levy revenues received from the new developments. Two, property taxes that are paid each year by all property owners and business owners. The municipality failed to provide the following information that was requested prior to October 3rd. Summary of total cash reserves for the four, the past four years, and this was to establish the rate of growth. Summary of revenue generated by the two revenue streams for the past four years, once again to establish rate of growth. Increased costs resulting from new developments compared to the revenue generated by those new developments. The municipality refuses to use any of the money from the sewer reserve fund, which is estimated to be $3 million, because, item one, it is needed for future repairs to the Main Street trunk line. Rebuttal of number one, the portion of the Main Street trunk line south of the perimeter is seven to nine years old. The portion of the Main Street trunk line north of the perimeter is five years old. Life expectancy of this trunk line is 50 to 100 years. The 114 property owners, we all, will all be dead by the time that trunk line requires any repairs. Item two, it is needed for the future installation of the McPhillips trunk line. Rebuttal of number two, majority of property directly east of McPhillips is primarily zoned agricultural. Any future developments will generate tens of millions of dollars of income from the levy charges applied to the new homes. Presently, the municipality has a minimum of 100 new homes built each year. 100 homes generates $1,350,000 of levy revenue for the municipality. $250,000 of this goes directly into the sewer reserve fund. It is a literal cash cow. The municipality did not provide any timeline as to when the McPhillips development or installation of the trunk line would take place. Two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years.
Excuse me, Mr. Galloway, do you have any questions?
No, I'm reading my comments.
Do you have any questions for it?
I'm reading my comments. Number three, standard accounting practices across Canada do not allow cash reserves to be used for lids. Rebuttal to number three. West St. Paul is one of the fastest-growing municipalities in the entire country. As a result, its levy revenue each year from new homes is tremendous. Most municipalities in Canada do not have the revenues from new developments, if any, that West St. Paul has. As a result, they do not have the resources to use this money for any local improvement. But West St. Paul does have the cash reserves on hand, approximately $22 million. Number four, only property owners of the lid benefit from sewer installation. Rebuttal of number four, this is another example of misinformation spread by the municipality. Mr. Dave Wardrop repeatedly said at the town hall meeting that only the property owners benefit from the lid. Meanwhile, at the same time, the municipality also tells property owners that once sewer is installed, that their property values will increase. News alert, Mr. Mayor, when property assessments increase, so do property taxes. Therefore, higher revenues are generated to the municipality. Why won't the municipality admit that all residents of West St. Paul benefit? And finally, number five, the levy revenues are not to be used for subsidizing lids in other areas of the municipality. Rebuttal of number five, during the town hall meeting, Mr. Dave Wardrop stated that these revenues are not to use to subsidize lids in other areas in the municipality, as it would not be fair. This comment is most troubling, especially to seniors on fixed incomes as well as other property owners that have built this community over the past 40 years. Every time there is a new development in West St. Paul, there is an extreme stress put on Seven Oak School Division. A new school is being planned, busing costs increase, more teachers are required. All these increased costs are paid for by all property owners through higher school taxes. Municipal council's response is, that is not our problem. Increased expansion in municipality is causing planning and cost issues for the Seven Oak School Division, but the administration will not accept responsibility that they have caused a problem in the first place. Also, in 2014, I subdivided my property and created two new lots. I paid $6,500 dedication fee and a $2,500 sewer levy fee for each lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Galloway, your time is up. I asked if you had any questions. You didn't have any questions?
I am not finishing. So you're not going to allow me to finish?
You had 10 minutes to do your presentation?
Well, I understand that, but in the town hall meeting, you restricted us to five minutes, is that correct? And you let Mr. Bruce Henley talk for 15 minutes. I've only got about two more minutes here. Are you going to let me finish?
I guess it's up to the residents over there, if that's what you want to...
Okay, you can allow, allow me to... Okay, I'll start again. Also, in 2014, I subdivided my property and created two new lots. I paid a $6,500 dedication fee and a $2,500 sewer levy for each lot. The municipality received $18,000 in levy fees. To date, the municipality has not spent a nickel of that $18,000. No improvements whatsoever were required from the municipality for the two new homes that were built on the two new lots. These homes generated revenue to the municipality every year. Yet, the only extra cost for the municipality is the $252 yearly garbage pickup cost for the, each home. There is no additional cost to the municipality for snow clearing, as the two new homes are in between existing homes. There is no extra work for the snowplow to do. In the end, my $18,000 levy money has disappeared into the big cash reserve, the black hole for the municipality, and it is not available to reduce my overpriced cost of sewer installation for my property. Isn't there something wrong with that concept? Also, the sewer reserve fund was, will celebrate its eighth anniversary at the end of this year. There is approximately $3 million in this fund. It's growing at a rapid pace. At the October 5th town hall meeting, I repeatedly asked the mayor and Dave Wardrop how much money was used from this fund in the past eight years. The representatives of the municipality refused to provide a response. The silence is deafening. This is yet another example of the lack of transparency shown by the administration of West St. Paul. I hope that your office, and I'm talking about Minister of Municipalities, or the municipal board investigates what is present going on in West St. Paul municipality. Property owners are unable to get any answers from their elected officials. The municipal act must be updated so that property owners' right to information is guaranteed. It is shameful that elected officials do not communicate with property owners in an honest and transparent manner. Instead, they use fear tactics. Interest rates will go up. Funding from the Water Services Board will not be available in the future. Your septic field will fail and you will have to install a holding tank. All these statements can be heard when you watch the video of the October 5th town hall meeting. When you view the video of the town hall meeting, you will see that property owners made various legitimate suggestions on how to reduce the overall cost of the sewer installation. The municipality's response was to announce that the public hear and we'd be held on November 2nd. In other words, the town hall meeting was a complete fraud. The municipality had no intentions of considering any of the valid suggestions made by property owners. This has to stop now. I urge that the minister meet with three or four property owners and hear their concerns, as the municipality has no interest in doing so. The municipal act must be amended, so this abuse of power by the municipality is not allowed. All elected officials should be held accountable to the property owners who elected them. Let it be clear, all 114 property owners are in favor of having a sewer, but only at an affordable price.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for me?
I have none because you haven't asked any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway, you're keen.
The next person registered is Wally Kruger.
Yeah, I'm just here to, here to...
Okay. R. Mandock. Sally Allen.
Hello. I live at 26 Kennebeek Street. We've lived there for almost 50 years. When we first moved there, we were, you know, concerned about the water situation. We were told, don't do anything, there's sewers, you know, the sewer's coming, the sewer's coming. This went on for decades. Don't do anything, don't do anything. And then all of a sudden, you know, the newspaper article came out. Some of you may remember it, West St. Paul's Dirty Little Secret. And so, in, within a week, we had to remedy the problem, which we did willingly because we thought it was the right thing to do. I think it cost us about $13,000, which is reasonable. We have a, a tank that is pumped out regularly, and everything is working fine. I would like the sewer. I think that it would be very nice, you know, at some point, that whole system might fail. But this cost is just prohibitive. Now, $27,000 to put in the main line. Our house is situated about at 200 feet plus from that main line. So what would the cost of hookup be? Would it be $10,000 or would it be much more? Can anybody answer that for me? What is the cost per foot of installing the hookup?
Is someone going to answer that?
I, I can tell you just what the cost would be, like, within the right-of-way for services. So typically, we might see $400 or $500 per meter for a service cost.
$400 or $500 per meter?
Yes.
I know. So that's what, like, 70 meters? Plus, plus the decommissioning of the tank. Now, here again, we've got some misunderstanding about whether our tank needs to be decommissioned or not, and we were told that it wouldn't have to be. So are, are you saying that every situation is different, and in some situations, tanks will not have to be decommissioned? Or all tanks have to be decommissioned?
You, okay, so what we're going to do is, we're just going to get you to ask all your questions, and then we'll ask, answer all your questions when you're finished with...
Okay. The, the other question that I have is, has there been any consideration for some of the other suggestions made at the last meeting? As far as developing of the Monsignor's property or the developing of the property immediately north of, of Minnehaha? And whether that would impact our hookup in any way? And would help us with the costs? Another idea that was brought up was that we pay for hookup only, and that the municipality actually pay for the trunk line, which is what happens in the city, right? The city of Winnipeg, the residents don't pay for the main trunk line that comes down the street, they pay to hook up to their house. And if there's a problem from the, from that, in that line, they're responsible for that hookup, that line, which makes sense to me as well. So that's about all I have to say.
So you have, you have three questions? Decommissioning of the tank, consideration of developments, and wanting to know about the municipality paying for the trunk line? So I'll have our panel answer those questions for you at this present time.
No, you're next.
Uh, excuse me, uh, just one at a time, sir. Hello, sir? Sir?
$28,000, and you're quoting us $10,000 to $15,000.
Our, our work that StanTech is involved in is not the part that's on private property, but there, there will be actual costs for people that have hooked up on Rossmore and Addis, the municipality would have, that I don't necessarily have access to. So I think the numbers that are provided are based on those costs that were, for people that are actually connected.
So, so to answer, I can try to answer a couple of questions here anyways. In terms of, has there been any new information in terms of some developments in, in the neighboring properties? There's, there's no indication at this time, and there's no reason or timeline that we've been provided that any of the neighboring properties will be developed. That's not to say that new information won't arrive tomorrow. That's not to say that potentially nothing will happen for, for 30, 40, 50 years. There's, there's no indication whatsoever, one way or the other, with those timelines. Our, um, the project is based on the understanding that, that there won't be, um, development of those, those properties in the foreseeable future. Further to that, though, any development in neighboring properties, very realistically, could be self-contained gravity systems themselves with no requirement to connect in through the, the, the Kennebeek, uh, Minnehaha, Hiawatha subcatchment. So it's quite possible that, very possible that, that, um, no developer would have a need or desire to reconnect and invest in, in that system, even if it did come along at some point. In, in terms of, um, the city Winnipeg, typically wastewater sewers are installed when developments occur. And when you purchase a property, uh, part of the purchase price involves the installation of the water line, installation of the sewer line, installation of the land drainage system, installation of, of the roadway, and, and any other utility services. So that, that's involved in, in, in the purchase, uh, part of the property. If, if there is a local improvement to a property, perhaps, um, a land drainage sewer or otherwise, that is an additional cost, and a local improvement district is very similar to, to what's being proposed here. And so again, that pipe would be installed at a cost, and then the, the connection fee would exist. Finally, I, I think I know the answer to, um, will the tank have to be decommissioned? But maybe, um, maybe I can look to either Dave or Brett to comment on that. My understanding is yes, uh, there, there will be need to decommission the, um, the, the holding tank and the septic field, but, but can I get absolute clear confirmation from StanTech?
Yes, the tanks would have to be decommissioned. So they either have to be filled in with sand, or they can be removed or crushed in place, but the tank would have to be decommissioned, yes.
The reason I questioned whether that would be on an individual basis was that when we put in our tank, we put it about, I think it's about 100 feet from the road. And so that means that the, the line from the house to the tank is, you know, a further 100 feet. But we situated it there, thinking that when the sewer came down... the hookup would not be as expensive. We don't have a field, we just have a tank. So would that still need to be decommissioned?
Well, we have a septic tank, not a holding tank. So now we were told that with a septic tank, you can hook up. Like, we went ahead of the municipality when people in Minnehaha did not. And so now, we've got a septic tank that was, was told, we, we were told, they're just hooking for the line. So now we've got 100 feet rather than 200 feet. Now you're saying that's wrong?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you will not need, the only reason you have to decommission your septic tank, the tank, you can still use the line that's 100 feet from your house. You can't use your, you don't need your tank. There will be, you don't need a storage capacity.
No, I understand that, as long as the hookup is now 100 feet instead of 200 feet to our house.
Well, i- if it's leading to there, as far as, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just getting into saying, as long as the height and elevation's gonna be working with it, if it's leading already to a field.
If it can, if it can work to the house, surely it can work 100 feet closer to the line, to the, to the main line. So if I'm understanding you, so you, you have, your service comes out the front of your house, and you have a tank that's closer to the street? Correct. Okay. So at that point, if you were to connect to the sewer, the contractor would dig down at that point in front of the tank, probably remove the tank, and then extend that service line to the sewer main? But as a step, I, I don't care about the tank. I'm just concerned about the hookup, distance from the road, but is there a difference, like, we were told? The difference is that we could then utilize the septic tank exits, if you like, to, to the main trunk line? No, you would, you would take the tank out, but the service pipe that you installed up to that tank, you could still use that. Well, that's the same as, the same as the holding tank, then?
So then if I, if I'm understanding correctly, if it's, you know, the, the number quoted before was 28,000, so then if we could use the pipe, the existing pipe from the house to the tank, it would cost 14,000?
That's right, in that example.
Right.
And I'm not telling you that's exactly what the price would be, but that's in order of magnitude.
I understand.
But if, if it's half as long, then it'll be half as much, most likely.
Right. Our concern was being able to use that existing line.
Yes.
Right, okay. One more question, if I may, and it's a quick one. If we can accrue all this interest and all that money, if we've accrued that amount of money so far, you know, with this delay, why don't we just leave it in there another couple of years and accrue a lot more money?
I'll let our CEO answer that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think with the accrual that's occurring through interest, hypothetically, 5% per year, something, something in that order. At the same time, you're, you're working against construction escalation, or the increase in, in construction inflation, which typically is greater than the general rate of inflation. And so probably, there wouldn't be a material difference between the, the gains in interest earnings against the, the escalation in cost. Furthermore, you, you run the risk of not having as much funding available. If the funding gets reallocated, that's, that's an issue. Also both, also by postponing the project itself. As people's septic fields do fail, and as tanks do fail, they won't have an alternative to connect if a pipe is not in place. And so people will be installing new pipes and new septic fields and have no choice as, as conservation or anybody else comes out and, and declares the, the field in violation of, of regulations. So, so there's, there really isn't an economic argument for postponing the project. The interest, again, I say, the interest earned would be offset by, largely, if not entirely, offset by construction escalation and inflation.
Excuse me, hold it, just, just wait till your turn comes up. Councilor Bichette has a question for our C A O.
Yes, just for clarification, Ms. Allen is asking if that money, does it sit in the account till the completion of the project, when it's finalized? Is there still interest occurring up to that point? And is that interest gonna be used to down, to, for the price to go down on this project?
Yes, I'm sorry if I misunderstood the question. The answer is yes. Any interest accrued that is still available will be applied to the project. So if the project commences, there will be interest accrued and, and available to offset some costs going forward in the project further. We're, we're hopeful that, that the numbers we provide here are conservative in nature. We're hopeful that the, that they present a conservative estimate of the costing, and, and what we'll see might be better. We can't offer any assurance of that. Contract prices come in with it, as they come in. We're hopeful that there'll be other grant sources available to help offset some of the costs of the project further for residents, and, and to appoint the interest accrued between now and final payment as well would be available to offset some of the pressures. And I apologize for misunderstanding your question.
I hope that, Ms. Allen, I hope that clarified, because you said that if, if we could stall the project for two more years, this is basically an 18 to 24 month project, that it's, it, it's gonna be incurred for that next 18 to 24 months. So at that 24 month, there's no guarantee. It's still there if we stop the project. So just to clarify.
Have you registered, sir? Well, if, if you're registered, your name will be called, so we'll call up the next one.
Would you like to make a carry on, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, carry on, too, sir.
Gary Allen is registered against, and he has spoken. Will you get to come up?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
So you have any other questions?
The, the cost of, and I'm getting this, I'm on, I've been given permission from Glenn Razong from Candle Company, who's been here for at least 45 years, that he was quoted at two quotes from two years ago for a 40-foot distance to the main line of $32,000. So I don't know if that's a question or not, but if, if we're at 100 feet and he's at 40 feet, that's a tad scary. And I, I, and I also, can you tell me why we would not be compensated for the 13,000 dollars that we put out? Something like, I don't know, 12 or 13, 14 years ago, whatever it was? Like, why can't we get reimbursed for that? When there's, there was a time, that there was 11 homes on Minnehaha that, that just carried on with no extra cost to them. Now, our previous mayor tried to shoot me down by saying I was talking through my hat, didn't know what I was talking about, where'd you get this information from? And again, that can be, it may not be 11 homes now, but it's at least six homes that are still going into the, the pipe that's going under Minnehaha. And again, that can be confirmed by not just me, but others, like Glenn. Do you have any comment about that?
So you had two questions. You wanted to know about the cost of your line going to the house, which we already answered.
But I accept that it, it, it's not the same as what has been confirmed by Glenn, who has two serious quotes from two different companies for 40 feet at $32,000.
So at this time, we don't know what was quoted to Glenn, but your wife asked a question about the length of cost to the house, and that, we have answered that question. I believe that's the question you're asking. I know you're asking for a price difference, but there were some numbers given here, so the next, okay?
But the, but the point is, you're giving, you're lowballing the costs.
Okay, sir. Your wife has asked.
If you don't, if you don't like the question, then what are we here for?
I'm telling you, sir, that the question you're asking is, you tell me if this is the question you're asking. What is the cost gonna be for your house? Is that the question you're asking or not?
Sure.
Okay. That cost has been answered to your wife.
So it's next, how, how is it possible, then, that Glenn had two quotes two years ago for twice as much? Can you answer me that question?
Mr. Allen, the costs that, that $10,000 to $15,000, our administration has gone down Rossmore and Addis, which was the latest version of getting an L A D similar to this one. And those costs have been taken from there, from other residents, and at the cost that they have had done down that street.
But what's the distance from that to the main trunk?
It's, that's probably more than, than it would be on most of the, and I'm saying most of this one. Because there's differences. I can't tell you. I don't know the distances on those.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to your.
Well, that's fairly significant, don't you think?
Okay, sir, like, we're gonna go on to your next question. You wanted to know if you could be reimbursed. I'll let our C A O answer that.
Well, I don't think that's right. You just have to pass it off because you don't like the question. There's another house, there's another house that's in the middle of Hiawatha. They've got 250 feet that they've gotta get to their tank. So what, so what, 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 what would that cost? 250 feet?
Sir.
You can't tell them that that's gonna be 10 to 15,000 dollars.
But that has been answered already with the price number of how many it was.
Well, I'm disputing that answer.
Okay, you know, sir, then you have an opti, you have, you can dispute it. We cannot give you an answer because we do not know what the circumstances of all the quotes are. We know that one thing is that every property is different. Just because your house is 200 feet from a property, and the next house is 2 feet, 200 feet from a property, does not, does not mean it's gonna be cost the same, because there could be different obstacles in its road. So you're asking us for something that we have no control over, that we do not know what it is, and that's why we recommend that you get a cost from a qualified engineer.
But when, when you're giving us all these, all these numbers, you're giving us the lowest possible cost, which in our case is half of what you're, what you're proposing. So it's, it's just, it's, it's not accurate. So how, how can, like, we're standing here arguing about something because of the cost. We're not against the sewer. But we, you know, we're, we, we've got, you're expecting us to, to dump something like, I mean, who's got that kind of money sitting in a bank account we need to put into a sewer? So that's gonna be amortized over so many years at our age as, as pensioners, and as I mentioned in the last meeting, young people with, young children, to put in 70,000, 60 to 70,000 dollars. And who knows what it would cost for those people who are 250 feet away from the main trunk? So you're giving us all of these numbers, the lowest possible numbers you can come up with, and say, well, we're not sure about the rest? I hate to say, I.
I, I just wanted to make a quick comment, sir. So the Rossmore Addis area is part of the area that I represented when I was campaigning. I, I asked quite a few of the residents how much the hookup costs were and, and the distances. And this, you know, so these numbers of 10 to, 10 to 15 are actual costs that they have, you know, said that it costs, and they were anywhere from 60 to 140 feet from the main trunk. You know, I, I don't wanna argue with you at all. I just wanna give you actual numbers that I was told.
So, right, the question was asked, could he be reimbursed for his installation that he did 15 years ago?
Yeah, the, the, the whole notion of getting the sewer installed now is to avoid circumstances like this going forward, where people make improvements, where people install tanks, where people install septic fields, so that, so that investment isn't put into place, and then ultimately, at some point, you, you, not fully realized. That said, no, there isn't an opportunity to reimburse the, the cost of that, that, that installation. But that said, is, my understanding is, is, and, and I might ask Laney to verify this, but, but my understanding is, is residents have up to 10 years to connect, and if they connect within 10 years, or, or until they sell their home, it provided there isn't a failure of their tank or their field. So if you have a, if you have a tank now that is 10 years old, in theory, if you didn't have plans to move out of your home for another 10 years, you'd get 20 years' life out of your tank, which, which is starting to approach sort of the, the timeline of a tank anyways. So no, there isn't an opportunity to recover that cost. But my understanding is, is there wouldn't be a requirement to hook up right away. Is it, do, am I correct with 10 years?
That's correct. So the regulation requires connection within 10 years of the completion of the project. And then if, if the property is sold, it's meant to connect, and the new owner would have two years to complete that.
Thanks, Laney. So, so realistically, it, you know, it could be, could be 10, 12 years, something in that order, unless you were to, to sell your home. So no, there isn't an opportunity to recover that investment. However, there is an opportunity to, to realize that investment longer than you have already.
Can we have the next person, please?
Thank you. The next person is Violet Desane.
My name is Violet Desane. I live at 326 Hiawatha Avenue. And I wanna remind you that this is government property, Crown Land. We don't own this property, and we're not gonna pay anything for it. As a matter of fact, I have a workable solution, so nobody has to pay for anything. First of all, we, we are your boss. We have, we're the ones who elected you. You work for us. We tell you what to do. You don't tell us what to do. And you guys never approached us with the company that you hired to see whether or not we wanted to accept them to do this job for us. We know there's corporations worldwide that will come to Canada and do this job for half the price. So we expect you to put out a tender, and, and I, we want you to put out a tender, and we want you to have a legal tender, and we want you to take it to the associations, tradespeople who are very capable of doing this job for half the price. And we don't have to pay for it, and you can, and what we would like you to do is contact the presidents of the association. Once you have the legal tender together, they will, the presidents will put it out on a bulletin, and contractors will bid for this project. And it's a highly competitive field right now. People are just begging for businesses. There's lots of businesses who need the money. And they will negotiate lower terms than what you guys have got us. And we won't have to pay anything, because you have enough money put aside that you could utilize for, to get this project started with many companies who will charge half the price. So we expect you to do that. Do your shopping. You haven't done that. You go one company that you decide is gonna be representing us, and we can afford them. We don't have the money to pay for them. They're too costly. We don't have the money, so they're fired. We're gonna get you to get a company that, 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 we're gonna get a bunch of contractors who are gonna present the bits to you of what they feel that, what, you're gonna present the project to them, and they're gonna put out the cost of what they feel it's gonna cost us for the project. What you're gonna do is probably get about 50 to 100 people, contractors applying. You can apply to Germany. You can use Google Translate to, to speak to these people in different languages. I worked on Bay Street and King Street. We hired people from all over the world that did trades. And people can come from Toronto. They can come from the USA. You get ahold of the associations. The presidents will put this out, and, and people will bid. You can have them bid for, in six months to have them cut down the bidding of that. And then you, we can decide. We want you to give us the companies that have applied for the contract, and when, and then we know who, who you, you've actually, actually made, you made an effort to do this. And then, and then when we see the companies and all the people who applied, you can narrow it down to five people that you feel is affordable with the money and the funding that we have. And then when, when you do that, you can send us the five companies in a newsletter email. We can review the costs and expenses, and we can all vote on the company we want that's affordable. This way, we don't have to put money out of our pocket that we, you've already got so much money. And then on top of that, you can get some government, you can get some government funding from N D P government, like Garrett Bruce Henley said last time, they have $500 million. from N D P government, like, uh, Garrett Bruce Henley said last time, they have five hundred million dollars, um, of grant money. And so we want somebody that, that's affordable. We don't have to pay for crown property, we don't, it doesn't, and you can't raise our property taxes because, uh, this, this is not our property. This is crown property, it's illegal for you to raise our property taxes because this is not our property, what you're doing in the main sewer line. And then after, when we get the main sewer line in, we, the homeowner can leave it to their discretion to hook up, hook up who, get to hook up when we wanna hook up, at our leisure. Some people have to hook up, like, you got a new neighbor who wants to build a house, he probably wants to hook up right away. I don't have to hook up for the rest of my life, my septic tank works, and until it breaks and doesn't work, I don't have to hook up. And I wanna choose the person I want to do the job, who's prob- who's gonna be licensed and approved by, with their, um, they gotta be approved anyways for a work permit, they're not gonna be allowed to do the job if they're not licensed and worthy. So we want you to do your job, and we want you to shop around for people who are more affordable to do the job, so we don't have to pay for any of this because we don't have to pay for this. You hired a company that's way too costly, and we don't have, we don't have the money, we can't afford it. And we're not paying for crown, uh, government property that we don't own. And we don't have to incur any debt whatsoever. So that's exactly what we want you to do, or you can get out of your job, and we'll replace you with somebody else. We're your boss. Do you understand that? We hired you to work for us and represent us, and you're not doing your job. Okay, so you get out, or we're gonna go face our M L A, and we're gonna make sure you're removed from your job because you're supposed to represent us in the best possible wa- possible way. And you have not done your homework, you have not showed us other, other companies, corporations who've been on the job, who are willing to do this probably for half the cost. And so also, the West Saint Paul people who you've already charged money for, they can sue the corporation who's done this, they can take them to court. There's the RICO Act that, that allows corporations to be sued under the RICO Act. It's called R I C O. People can go get ten litigation lawyers and pick out the best litigation lawyer. They can get their money back for, for the pain and suffering that they were caused, the expense. And, and that's what, uh, the West Saint Paul people should do who are already pay, had to, had to endure this ridiculous stupidity. You have not done your homework, and that's what we want, and we wanna vote on this right now. We want, do you, do you people wanna go with God and, and not pay? Or do you wanna go with Satan, their version, and pay?
Violet-
So by a raise of hands, are we with God, we don't have to pay? And we can decide who we want to have the job done? Or if we're gonna go with these guys who are gonna charge us an arm and a leg? We're in charge of them, okay? We're their bosses.
Okay, Violet, thank you very much.
Am I over my time?
Councilor Shetty will be able to answer your questions.
Okay, so I'm not finished. So, so I, 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 what else did I wanna say here? Um, okay, yeah, so for when it comes down to us hooking up, like, we get that option. Like, there are probably people who really need to hook up now who are in favor, and who wanna hook up. So when you get the main sewer line put in, like, you can use the money we had to put towards a project, of a project that's more affordable by, by contractors who are gonna probably reduce this price in half. So you can use that money towards the cost, you can get additional funding from the government. Plus, in the meantime, you can save money however you accumulated this money in the first place, this five, uh, two million or whatever it is that you have of our money that you're gonna put towards this project. However, you can set out terms with the, with the person that you hire, that we approve, uh, to do the job for us, it's not gonna cost us any money. And if it costs a little bit more, then, you know, you guys can figure it out in count, in accounting, how to pay them, uh, set out terms of payment, and then, you know, a, a loan with them, where you, you pay them, uh, the two million dollars that we have, plus you're gonna get funding from the government, you pay that. And if there's extra money that we gotta, you guys gotta put out for this cost of the sewer, then what you do is you set terms out with that contractor, and then you pay them either biannually, or annually, or quarterly, and, uh, out of the money that however you got, the two million dollars that you're gonna use for the funding. And that's how I propose, we don't have to pay for it. This is how I propose the West Saint Paul people that have incurred these costs, get their money back. And I think this is the right way to go, and I think this is how we should vote. You're, 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 Dave Turney, uh, myself, and Ken Jones have lived here for sixty-five years. We've paid, uh, a, a amount of taxes for three mortgages, and we have got nothing. Dave Turney's father established a fire department, Ken Jones has owned four properties on Hiawatha. With all the tax money we've incurred, we, you know, this project is already paid for by us way over. You owe us money because I don't see anything you've done for us. So I, I kind of stand there, and I think people should go for what Violet says or what Satan wants. So, like, it's up to you, your choice.
Okay, thank you, right. Thank you very much. Could we have the next presenter, please?
Can I just comment on something? Violet, if I can answer one, or make, I guess, clarification to some of your comments? There's been no tenders put out yet. Right now, all there is, is a costly estimate so that we can start the project, put the project out there to the residents. Before a tender goes out, as municipal board says to us, we have to have a public hearing, and it has to be passed. Then there is a tender put out to get a lower cost. But without it getting to this stage, we can't say the cost is gonna go down because we don't know the tenders that are coming in. We have, if we get enough objectives, we may never know what the cost is gonna be coming into this. Because the tender can't go out. I'd like you to get through your ten minutes, I'm just trying to clarify some of the comments I've made.
But have you, have you formed this out to, like, the world, have you-
This doesn't, it can't go out for tender, and that's what I'm trying to tell you. But you're not getting out of it. It can't go out for tender to all the companies around the world, as you said, that gets done after the public hearing, if it gets passed through a public hearing. We asked the municipal board prior to us even coming into this, couldn't go out for tender for budget purposes? No, you have to have a public hearing, it has to pass before it goes out for tender. We wanted to get real costs, and we couldn't do it. This is the only way to do it, it's not us deciding that.
Okay, so why are we providing this for cost then? Why are you giving a cost and that, saying, you're saying how much it's gonna cost? But, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that cost, it has, it could be after cost.
It states on every one of these estimated costs.
Estimated!
Because it's not gone out for tender yet, you've not listened to that, sorry.
Why do you estimate the cost when we don't have to pay? We don't have to pay, this is not our property. We'll pay for hookup from our, from the main line to our property when we choose to do so with the company we choose to go with at the time we wanna do that. We don't have, we're not paying for crown land, that's not our property. We, when we sell our land, are we gonna get that money back? When we sell our property, no. That's gonna be lost, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand for the main sewer line. That's not our, that's not for us to be paying. That doesn't belong to us, that, we don't own that, we're not gonna repeat that when we sell our land.
Excuse me, Violet, excuse me, if, uh, your, your timer's up, and I'd like to make sure that we give, uh, everyone else an opportunity to speak. I appreciate it, thank you very much. Could we have the next presenter, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the next person signed up is Norma Alberg.
I definitely don't need my ten minutes. Not given enough. Uh, Norma Alberg, I live at, uh, three twelve Evelyn Avenue, and I, I do certainly object to the bylaw as it stands in its, uh, present form. In our recent open house for this L I D bylaw, the residents shared several viable options and models which could be used in this case. The overall opinion seems to be that folks do agree that the municipality should continue moving forward with the expansion of wastewater infrastructure. The issue with this L I D is the extreme financial burden which would be placed on the one hundred and fourteen homeowners. And I would also like, at this point, to state the obvious, uh, and that is that two of our five councilors are not here. I hope that their health is well because I cannot imagine, other than ill health, that they would not be present for such a critical issue for this community. So I hope they are well, and if, and if it's not because of ill health, then I'm beyond disappointed in that. Back to what I was going to say, there were community planning decisions and actions in the past, in previous terms, which were inadequate, and not all in our best interest. Now, we, the ratepayers, end up paying for oversights and incompletions from decisions and formal DAs and other actions that were taken in previous terms. This is our chance to move forward and not repeat those same mistakes. And you're even correcting some of the old mistakes as we go forward, such as the putting in the lights in the trails, getting green space for Whistler Hollow, getting green space for the Legends. And these mistakes of the past are being corrected. Every one of those decisions are made by you. You are council. You decide. Everything that is brought forward to you from the staff who are there to work for you, you rubber stamp it all, you get, get the final say. Who gets what, why, how? This year, what are the priorities for next year? Everything that comes on a capital budget comes to you, and you alone give the final say on that. In this year, you did approve one million dollars essentially from the gas tax reserve to go to Magalas. You decided that that was a priority. In the nineties, for Evelyn Avenue, my street, there it had to be repaved. It is a street one block long that includes the shipping and receiving for the Middle Church Home, definitely has multiple trucks coming and going on that street. Yet, for that, there was an L I D to which we had to contribute. And that was fair. It improved the street because you don't know which vehicle wrecked it. Now, Magalas, the residents on Magalas, thirty-four homes, it is a cul-de-sac that has a short street that can connect them to the mi- the larger streets within the municipality so they can exit their cul-de-sac. They can now drive on that street. But by paving the street for them, you gave them an improvement. That improvement was paid one hundred percent from the existing revenue of all the municipality in the specific gas tax. Right now, I can go to the bathroom in my house. If you come to visit me, you can go to the bathroom in my house. If any of my friends from any area, anywhere in the municipality come to visit, they can go to the bathroom in my house. If we're choosing to make an improvement by putting in the sewer system, then why are we not being afforded the same approach to that that the folks were given for paving the road? There was no L I D in other communities, and indeed even in West Saint Paul. It's decided by council when and what they will call as an improvement, and when and how they will levy an L I D. And indeed, we have done that for paving. So, the previous L I Ds that were undertaken for the sewer uh, infrastructure were undertaken under very different economic times. And on, on all of those earlier L I Ds, if you looked at the principal to interest ratio, which is what was the interest rate at the time, how does that translate to what it means to the person who has to get the loan? They had a ratio of up to three to one. So for every three dollars that was needed to be borrowed, they only had to pay a dollar in interest. Ours will be one to one. In order for us to get this two point five million dollars, we in fact have to pay more than two point five million dollars extra to get the two point five. So it's like telling somebody that it would be nice to get a new car, your car still works. But there's a nice car out there, I know you have a hundred thousand dollars, you should keep the hundred thousand, maybe go out and get a loan now for a fifty thousand dollar car. By the time you finish paying it, you can amortize it over a number of years. But by then, your fifty thousand dollar car will have cost you the hundred thousand. That's what you're telling us to do. You have to understand what the residents are saying, that at one time, it doesn't help for us to amortize this over the twenty years. So instead of paying seventeen thousand dollars, I can feel much better about this, and in order to leave twenty thousand dollars there for me to do my own personal hookup, I can amortize it over twenty years, and instead of paying seventeen thousand, pay thirty-four thousand. That really doesn't make me feel much better at all. This plan, as it stands, will place an immense financial burden on the homeowners, your electorate. And about the only way that this can get better is if that payment amount has been brought down. So I gave the Magalas paving as an example because it's always a ma- it's also a magic one million dollars. For each one million dollars extra that comes into this pot to reduce the amount required for the L I D, it reduces the financial burden on each individual homeowner by ten thousand dollars. That's huge. The R M is sitting on a surplus of several, uh, two-digit million-dollar surpluses and reserves and revenue that is available. There is currently only one of the three levels of government that has stepped forward to do their part. Where are the feds? This whole fiasco is underway because of the federal legislation regarding clean waterways. Subsequent to that, as you stated in two thousand nine, the province declared the, the sensitive Red River Corridor. So what responses have you had from your federal counterparts? When did you last enter into a solid conversation with them on this specific matter? Where is their financial contribution? Why are we not seeing funding from federal infrastructure pots for this? Maybe the I S I P fund? Which federal funds did you apply for on our behalf? And where are you, our own municipal money? There is not one single penny of municipal funding contributed to this pot, as is common practice in other municipalities, to ensure fair, equitable, and manageable community improvement. You were elected because the community of West Saint Paul was tired of being ignored. We were tired of being not listened to. The intent of any public hearing is exactly that, to hear the public. It is an opportunity for the public to provide feedback and input before any decision is made by a completely, totally, and utterly unbiased elected council. Your decision is to be made only after hearing and considering the information and the responses from your electorate. And I truly hope that you understand that responsibility which you have agreed to take on, and for which I say for a notable indemnity, which you recently raised. Your best decision this evening may very well be no decision at all. Walk away, continue your planning, working on our behalf, and reconfigure this plan based on all of the information which you have been hearing from the public. Don't be the cause of any West Saint Paul homeowner having to lose their home and walk away from this community. We're pleading with you to work hard on our behalf.
You had, uh, you had two questions. You wanted to know about where the federal grants were? If you applied for federal grants? Those are, I'll ask if the municipal can answer those questions.
I'm sorry, uh, can you please repeat, Mr. Mayor? Can you please repeat the question?
Uh, one of her questions was if- One of her questions was if we applied for federal grants.
Yes.
Okay, Crystal, can I ask if you can respond to that question?
We've currently applied for FCM grant funding that we were denied due to the scope of the project. It is for brand-new infrastructure, brand-new treatment plants, those kind of things. It's not for extensions of current lines. So unfortunately, we were denied for funding through FCM.
So that suggests that West St. Paul will never get federal funding again then because we have an existing plant, we have an existing infrastructure?
Just through that area of grant funding.
Okay, and what about ISIP?
We have not looked into that, but I definitely will take that into consideration.
Thank you.
I can add there that we did look for current federal grants that are open, which there haven't been, but as has been committed by council, we will continue to apply for grants from federal and provincial and any other available grant that we can think of for this. One of the issues that we face is many of the grant programs don't allow you to stack funding, so that does reduce our eligibility for some things.
The current one is strictly provincial funding. We're absolutely able to add federal funding that comes to the RM because that's a decision made by council as to how they spend those.
You are correct. So the funding that we have received right now, the 50% funding, we can stack on that. There are, the federal grants that you're suggesting often have clauses where you can't stack those grants, so we would be ineligible to apply at that point, but we will watch and apply where we can.
And of course, you know that the gas tax does not have that clause. It can be stacked, as you say. You know that, yes. But we've heard in the past that it cannot be, but that's wrong. It can be. And Mr. CAO, I understand that you're new in the position, but there is extensive monies available in the municipal revenue. When will we hear consideration of what municipal monies can be put towards this? Remembering that every $1 million of this $2.5 million will reduce the burden by $10,000. What you're hearing tonight here is that individual properties personally will not have necessarily $10,000 to $15,000 to pay out, but they may have $30,000 to $40,000 to $50,000.
Yeah. Ultimately, this becomes a question of equity and community equity in terms of fairness all around. And when it comes to local improvements, and I think a lot of you have heard me explain this at the town hall, when it comes to local improvements, typically what happens is the benefactors of the local improvements are the ones that contribute towards the local improvements, the principle being that there's a service improvement, there's an appreciation of property value that's recognized by the area and the property owner that realizes that improvement. When you apply funding from general revenues or from the community at large for an improvement, a local improvement, that really focuses on a small, substantive property improvement or service improvement for a small area, then at that point, it comes into question whether or not you're being fair and equitable in terms of the financial position of the community as a whole. So when the communal hall is asked to contribute to a local improvement itself, it becomes a question of fairness and equity to the community as a whole. So that's why typically in local improvements, they're funded by the benefactors only and not the community as a whole.
I see. And so for the paving of the roads, those, I've sat in on several of the council discussions each year when council decides, picking and choosing who gets their priority this year. So which roads we're going to do?
So I'm not able to speak to that particular project in itself. I guess I could ask if anybody on the panel has some background on that project. I don't know the background in terms of that project selection. That said, it's not uncommon on road renewal projects and where you, there is an asset itself has reached sort of the end of its useful life to go in and make an improvement or make a renewal or replace an existing asset that's worn out. And that is different than a local improvement. That would be a repair or rehabilitation of the roadway itself. So I wasn't here for that decision-making. So unless I misunderstand, that's not uncommon is to have renewals and restoration done throughout the community on a priority basis, and that priority basis is typically done based on need and condition of the asset, as well as the use and the value of renewing the asset.
Okay. And I'll just leave a comment that I know that I have forwarded information to all of you just for information regarding how other municipalities have approached similar types of LIDs, reminding you again that it is a final decision by resolution of the council. There, any decision that is made can also be amended. I do not feel that there was a good deal given to Ross Moradis. I feel they paid too much. The earlier ones were probably reasonable for the financial burden, but I believe that you should be taking a hard look at this. And for those in the audience who may not know, I will say that the RM of St. Andrews, in order to keep their LID burden on the ratepayers low, they took over $3 million from their gas tax reserve and put it into that to pay down the extra cost beyond the half that was given by the province. So the province is the only partner who has stepped up to the plate on this one. The federal legislation started it. Now we're not getting federal monies, and I think that council and council mainly needs to be sitting down with your counterparts, with the feds, and having some really strong conversations about this. And the municipality has not stepped up. You have not stepped up.
Councilor, I'm sure you will be able to answer to your comments there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Alberg, I just want to clarify that you're aware, because you were at the meetings, there was a $512,000 grant that was given to all the, the entire municipality, which this council has decided to lower the burden on this LID. That money that goes to the entire municipality for other projects has all been transferred over to this LID. So to say that this council, we didn't, that the municipality did not step up and put money into this project, there is $500,000 put into this project that should go to the entire municipality.
Yes, thank you. That kind of opens the door and lets me briefly describe what happened in my hometown in Nova Scotia, different municipality, but still.
Excuse me. I have Councilor Campbell also willing to answer to your question about Magalas.
Go ahead.
Hi. So Magalas was a new development, right, as you're aware? And when that development was advertised, it was advertised as a paved road development. The developer went broke, as you're well aware. And when that happens, the RM takes whatever line of credit money is left from that developer, which they did take. And then, you know, I don't believe Magalas was a million dollars. Mr. Roman.
$9.60.
Could probably, but there was money that they did take from the developer originally, so it wasn't just solely the $9.60 as the number that you're saying. There was money that the RM did take from the developer. You know, these homes were promised to be paved street roads originally, where, you know, if you bought a house that was on a gravel road and the house is 40 years old, you weren't expecting it to be paved in the next few years, that's for sure.
So the lights in the trails, did the developer go broke there? Or did they walk away from there?
Okay, I guess the thing is, is we've answered your question on Magalas, we've answered your question on municipality stepping up. We have to continue on with our meeting and allow other residents to speak up too.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your comments, and thank you for your, we'll take a look at it. Bye. About the next presenter, please.
Thank you. The next person signed in is Marlon Thiessen.
Okay.
Just a few things that come to mind about this whole thing. First of all, I'd like to know who paid for the main line to go down Main Street. I recently, I've lived in the area since 2001. I lived on Main Street, just down from the school. And about seven or eight years ago, they came through with the main line. I believe the main line is on the east side of Main Street. And of course, they stubbed through into my yard. At that point, it cost me 16, around $16,000 approximately to have that stub put in. And they also put in a water meter, which was no cost to me. I'm just wondering, and also at that time, I was told that once we hook up the city of Winnipeg, it was $600. And I'm not sure how it got from $600 to $3100 in five or six years. So I'm not sure if you guys are negotiating with the city of Winnipeg or you just say, oh yeah, whatever, it doesn't matter, we're not paying for it. So that kind of bothers me a little bit, but there should be a representative here from the city of Winnipeg to kind of verify how they can justify that kind of increase. I was also talking to my brother-in-law who lives in St. Andrews, and they kind of ran into the same issue lately. And they were told that city Winnipeg's price goes up 100 bucks a year. So I mean, this is, I don't know, that's not acceptable to me, but those are my issues why, you know, why from not paying for a meter, it's all of a sudden 500 bucks. And it's also like almost doubled or tripled from the original. If the municipality paid for the main line, why are they not paying for the lines going down our roads?
Okay, so you had two questions, who paid for the main line, and you wanted to know about why the hookup costs are increasing from the city of Winnipeg?
Yeah, and also like why, and why we're ending up having to pay for the meters at this point in time.
What's that about the meters?
Pardon me?
I didn't understand what you said about the meters. You wanted to know about?
Well, like I say, a few years ago, the meters were put in my home for free when I lived on Main Street. I moved onto Hiawatha in 2020.
Okay. Oh, so you want to know why they have to pay for meters now too? Is that the other question?
Yeah.
Three questions?
Yes.
Okay, I'm wondering if someone from administration can answer those three questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Crystal, are you able to answer?
So the main trunk line running down Main Street is actually financed. It does show up on the financial plan, and is paid by the municipality as a whole. So it is a part of the mill rate each year. Now for the meters, the meter cost was to be collected at time of connection. All other homes who are connected to the sewer system currently have paid their meter cost at time of connection, like I said. So it is added on to your first utility bill. The $600 was the estimated amount back in the day. Now that we have the actual cost, which occurred shortly after the installation of the meters, that's why it is now the $3.68 or so around there. So it is collected at time of connection.
That kind of scares me if you estimate it at 600 bucks and it's $3100 now, and you're estimating this at 30 grand, what's it going to cost us by then we're hooked up?
Oh, so for the city of Winnipeg, the original fee back in the day was, I believe it was around $2,300. It has gone up every year since then. If you are interested in seeing what the city Winnipeg fees are, it is in their fees and charges on their website. It is also a part of our agreement that it is allowed to increase by the cost of, cost of living, I believe, to a maximum of 3%. I believe, off the top of my head, that is what it is. So we can't just say we're only paying you this. We are mandated through the city of Winnipeg, through our agreement, that that is what we are required to collect from the residents.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether there was any, like any negotiation with them or whether they just threw numbers, you said, yeah, okay, well, whatever.
Unfortunately, the agreement is for 20 years, so it was signed in 2013, so we still have another 10 years before we can go to the negotiating table with them.
All right. Thank you for your questions. Can we have the next presenter, please?
Beverly Terhorst.
Good evening, Chuck Peters, 327 Hiawatha. Thanks for all your hard work, just a couple more questions. Is that better? So I guess the first question would be for the engineers, is the cost of the lift station that's happening on the Kennebec-Hiawatha Balduc one, is that, is that being divided by all 114 properties in that lid, or is it only for the ones that are benefiting from it or that have the need for it? You want me to ask all the questions at once?
Yes.
So that's the first one? Does that lift station have capacity for the neighboring developments, or are they ever going to tie into it, or is the design for us alone? I guess a pertinent question for everybody here, what's the timeline? Finding out the results, I don't know that this is a formal vote, but when will we find out if there's been two-thirds of the property owners have objected to the lid? And I guess, maybe I'm not understanding the point of this, because I understand the questions is great, but is there a different forum for dialogue, to ask questions, you know, because everybody has an idea how to make it better? I don't think that's helping this. You know, there's no conversation about that, so is there a forum for people to present different ideas and then have some dialogue? I guess that's the other one. Yeah, that's enough for today. Thanks.
So you had four questions. You wanted to know about the cost of the lift station. You wanted to know if the lift station is designed for other capacities for developments when it comes to future developments?
The cost, was it divided between those that need the lift station? I happen to live on the high end of Hiawatha. My sewer's going to flow straight there, not needing it. So I'm curious if it's divided between those that need it or all 114?
I didn't quite get your third question, find out of the, what was the question?
Timeline for the results, do we have two-thirds? People voted against it?
Timeline for votes, and the other one was a forum for?
Is there a forum for, you know, more constructive dialogue to be had?
Thank you very much. I'll have our administration, I guess I can ask our engineers to answer that question about the lift stations, if they could?
Yeah, maybe if you can stand there, please.
Yeah, for the lift station design, so it's only designed for this LID, it's not for any future development at this point? And the cost of it, I believe, is split over the 60 properties in the Minnehaha-Hiawatha area?
So it's divided by everybody?
By the 60 in that neighborhood, not?
Yeah, not the second one, not the next neighborhood, I understand. The capacity for the lift station, so the intent is for no one else to tie into it at any time in future?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask about timelines for votes?
Yeah, in terms of the timelines for the final votes, they will be made public once they've been fully tabulated. It'll be public information that'll be offered and?
The timeline for that, like are we talking a week? Are we talking a month, two months?
Laney?
I would anticipate that we may have that, I'm hoping to have that made official in our draft minutes, which would be on the November 9th agenda. That's the earliest that the draft minutes would be presented to council.
Couple weeks, that's totally reasonable.
That's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the hope, is that we'll have the draft minutes prepared for that meeting.
Perfect.
And in terms of another form, the intent of this public hearing is, is to hear from the public, hear from ID, hear ideas, and hear perspectives for the public, so that?
But dialogue is clearly stifled, though. I mean, there's not a lot of good discussion going back from what appear to be maybe good or lesser, not so good ideas, so to speak.
It's certainly welcome.
Okay.
Can I have the next presenter, please?
Ken Jones. Thank you. Peter Blahie.
This one? That good? Hey. Okay, I, a couple days ago, I sort of noticed to the administration, asking to... Is that okay? I sent an email to administration, asking to announce the... Got it? Asking to share the votes, if you will, the number of objections from both the Baldock community and the Kennebec community separately, and the total. Because in the public statement that was put forth, you were, we were asked to submit our position by the beginning of the meeting. So at this point, you should have some numbers. Are these numbers available?
Can you just list all the questions you want to ask first, and then we can answer them afterwards? So how many questions you have to answer?
Okay. Well, I have this, this is the main question. Because depending on the outcome of the question, it's gonna determine what else I have to say.
So you only got one question?
Yes.
Can I get the administration to answer that question, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Blahie, and thank you for your question in advance. We brought that information for tonight, as you had requested, and thank you for providing us with advanced notice of your question. So thus far, understanding that these numbers are preliminary, they are not final, and they are subject to change. People can change their position if they object. They can change their position to be in favor. If they're in favor, they can change their position to objecting. If they're for information, they can take a position one way or another. Other positions may be presented. So information available as of 3:00 PM this afternoon, and additional information likely has come in since then, certainly tonight as well and otherwise. As of 3:00 PM this afternoon, 62 objectors were received overall. In the Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec area, 42 objectors were received. In the Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn area, 20 have been received. Understanding, these are not final numbers. These are preliminary numbers, subject to change, and update, and they were of, as of 3 o'clock this afternoon. So that's the most recent information that we have tabulated. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, thank you. But what that says is that for those of us who object, we have not met the threshold, two-thirds threshold that is necessary. Because we need two-thirds of the total of the Kennebec and the...
Thus far, and again, preliminary numbers as of 3:00 PM this afternoon, 62 of 114 properties represents 54% of people.
54%. Okay, so we have not met the threshold yet.
The, according to the preliminary numbers, which are subject to change, as of 3:00 PM this afternoon, the threshold was not met.
Right, right. Okay, I want to make a few comments about the process. And I don't want to sound like a...
Sure. Hello, sir, sir.
Sorry?
I think, you know, everyone has made comments about the process. We understand that the process could be improved, so if we can just limit your comments to questions, because I'm sure there's other individuals that would like to make a comment, and we are, we're at 8 o'clock right now. And I want to make sure that they all have an opportunity to speak. So if you have any other questions, please keep it short to questions.
Okay. No, I guess it's relevant to the numbers that were just presented. It won't take a long time.
Okay.
That's okay. All right. The people in the, in our Kennebec area, I'm at the Kennebec, we are more and more motivated to object, I suspect, than the people in the other area. We're really, it's really apples and oranges, depending on the level of motivation. And if we take an extreme example, if 100% of the Kennebec people, Kennebec, Minnehaha people, object, that still doesn't guarantee that we can, that the matter will be, that the overall objection will be accepted. Because it could be overwhelmed by a small majority of people in the other area. Because they have less of a reason to object because of the difference in, difference in the burden. The other thing is, my wife, Lynn, has been doing a lot of work in the last few, last week or so. She's been contacting people. There's been a lot of concern and a lot of confusion about the voting process. Some people think that because they signed a local petition to object, that that's all they had to do. Some people think that because they objected last time to the last proposal, that they don't have to do this again. I think there's, I think there's some confusion amongst some people in the community who didn't quite understand what was expected of them at this stage. So I guess all I can say is that, you know, we stand in objection to this based on the burden. And we're quite prepared to kick the can down the road for two years, despite the fact that there are items being circulated out there that this is gonna cost more in the future and so on. We have some confidence that this council and administration can come up with a plan that'll be more acceptable financially to us, or people, or a council and administration in future can do that. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, you had a question about the voting process. I'm gonna ask administration, you mentioned a comment about voting process, you were...
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the administration to clarify that for you, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Laney.
Thank you. So I can address a few comments there. We have received one petition. I haven't reviewed it to determine sufficiency. There's a process that municipalities follow when we receive petitions to declare them sufficient, and a process that we engage in if it's not considered sufficient. So we would keep that in mind, depending on what the wording of said petition is. Of course, the objections raised this evening by signing in, by emailing us, or sending a written objection would be recorded, and that's where the two-thirds threshold is met.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, thank you very much. I can call for the next presenter, please.
Thank you. Murray and Linda Wilkie. Wayne Paulaway.
Hi there, Wayne Paulaway from 255 Minnehaha. A comment and a question. One of the items that, thank you Dave for giving us the numbers. 42 objections out of 60 in the one LID part of Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec makes a 7% objections. So my comment on that is, I believe, and I think many people believe, that the LID that was structured is incorrect because there's two separate pricing, two separate needs. The Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec has a lift station, whereas the other portion of the LID does not have a lift station. So it's two separate animals on this occasion. It should have been two separate LIDs. And that way, if a $26,000 cost came for one...
Can I ask you to refrain from your applause, tell the somebody speaking, please?
So I think at the town hall meeting, there was a discussion of maybe suggesting the Evelyn, Baldock, and Nye section be tied to something more similar and closer to them, which is Grassmere on the west side of Main Street. Because they're both similar, Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec is like a kilometer away. How often do we have LIDs that are that far of a distance with a seniors home and other residential areas in between those two LIDs? So I think we made a mistake, and I think we should take a look at correcting this mistake by creating two separate LIDs. That's my comment, and that's my question to council.
Thank you. You want to know if we can split this LID into two separate LIDs? I'm gonna ask our Water Services Department to answer that question.
Hi Travis, I guess the question is whether the LID can be split into two LIDs. The, just before I pass that to Water Services, the way the current LID is structured is of course what it is, right? It is structured as a single LID now. But the question, Travis, was whether the LID can be split into two LIDs.
So I think the question is whether it could be two different separate LIDs?
Yes, whether the two subcatchments, the Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec subcatchment, and the Nye, Baldock, and Evelyn Street subcatchment, whether that could be split into two LIDs is what the question was.
Yeah. As far as the funding is concerned, that doesn't really matter in respect to the Department of Municipal Northern Relations under the municipal, they administer the Municipal Act, that'd be a question for them, I think. But I think it's, it could be one, it could be two, but ideally, it should be through the, under the Municipal Act, the people that administer that that should ask that question.
Okay, thanks Travis. I might add to that somewhat. The, I guess there has been some discussion, and you raised, sir, that perhaps there's an opportunity to bundle the Evelyn, Baldock, Nye subcatchment with, I think you said Grassmere as well. And that's a bit of a hypothetical. I mean, the timing of that, the nature of the servicing of Grassmere all comes into question. Whether Grassmere is ultimately wind up being a separate gravity system, essentially unconnected, whether the Grassmere system develops, if and when it develops. Really, by waiting for a hypothetical development of the Grassmere area, you're effectively turning down the LID and postponing the LID because there isn't sufficient density down Grassmere now without development of some more of the area to justify the installation of the sewer. The cost per unit would actually be probably quite a bit higher. Now, and I say that without having done the analysis, but intuitively, it would seem that way.
I believe roughly numbers, 60 in the Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec. Grassmere from Main to McPhillips is about 60, same numbers.
Sorry, the mini, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Grassmere?
Yes.
The residents that live on Grassmere between Main Street?
And McPhillips, yeah.
And McPhillips.
Right.
That stretch has roughly 60 homes equal to the Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec. And again, Grassmere is closer to, lined up with Evelyn?
Right.
And closer to that LID feeling with no lift station, whereas again, Minnehaha, Hiawatha has a lift station. Separate, separate.
Understood, understood, understood. But the run of the pipe, and maybe I could pass this to Stan Tech, but the run of the pipe down Grassmere would be considerably longer because the density of development along Grassmere is considerably less. And therefore, the cost per unit would be considerably higher. And so you'd, you'd bring in, you'd be bringing, by bringing Grassmere in now, without known development, to support sort of that pipe down Grassmere, you'd be, you'd be bringing in, you'd be bringing up, you'd be increasing your overall average price per resident, because your price per resident right now would most likely be quite a bit higher because of the low density. But I'm supposing, and I'm sort of presenting that intuitively, perhaps Stan Tech could share their perspective on that as well.
I guess what I could say about that is there's only houses on one side of the road there, on the bulk of Grassmere, so that does drive up the cost, obviously, because you have the same amount of sewer, but you're only servicing half the number of homes versus if they're on both sides of the road. So I think in this case, it probably would make that neighborhood more expensive, but again, that's without having done that detailed analysis.
I understand, but two sections of Grassmere from Main to the railway tracks, the lots are actually smaller-sized lots than what you see on Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec. So that little section there, and I believe the requirement is between the railway tracks and the Red River where it's mandated to get sewer installed. So even if we did that small section of Grassmere, not the whole section right to, the cost would be less. Yes, further down Grassmere, closer to McPhillips, they're only on one side, and they're larger-sized lots. But closer to Main Street, smaller-sized lots, so less piping.
It could be in the LID, but it's not as it's proposed right now.
Okay. Again, just a final statement again, is 70% of the residents from Minnehaha, Hiawatha, and Kennebec said objections. And it's sad that we have to be included with another section. If I lived somewhere that was only gonna charge me $16,000, I would say yes. But if they're gonna charge me $26,000, I'm gonna say no. So it should have been two separate LIDs.
Wayne, if I got a comment on this, I'm sorry for butting in here. I did bring this up right when the numbers started coming out prior to our first, I guess, the open house part, asking if the LIDs can get split. And the way I was told through Municipal Board is that we're not allowed to do that because that's the way the project was, the grant was asked for. So I did ask for that to get changed, and they told us that it couldn't get changed. I don't think you're trying to say add Grassmere. You're just trying to say, why isn't it not two separate LIDs? Doesn't matter if it goes to one or the other. Grassmere was just put in there as a filler for what, instead of Hiawatha, Minnehaha. So you're, I can understand exactly what you're saying. I did ask the question before the numbers even came out, and it came back from Municipal Board that we were not able to do that.
So who creates the LID, council, or Municipal Board, or?
It's all, the way it was told with council is it's how the grant was, the application for the grant is put in.
Okay. All right. Okay. That's it for questions. This is more of a comment, because again, I still believe it's two separate LIDs. Should have been created for these two separate subdivision property owners. Okay? Thanks for your time. Thank you very much.
Alan Korchowski. Russ Klowczuk, I believe, on Evelyn. Horace Danica. Willie Church. Sir, did you want to come up?
I think a lot of the points that I've already brought, I'd just be repeating everything, so...
Here, Horace.
Just no comments, let him speak, and then we'll...
Willie Church from 321 Minnehaha. I'd like to go back to what Wayne was asking. Who puts the application in to combine these LIDs?
Do you have more than one question, or is that...
That's the question, because I don't think that was answered, and that's what Wayne was going on.
Okay, I'll have administration answer that question.
Laney, do you have a history on that? Or Dave, do you?
So it was council decision to place the two locations together as one LID?
Oh. Okay, thank you.
You can't do that without asking us. We have to vote on it. You can't go ahead and do stuff without...
Kate? Excuse me?
Please.
This has been going on for more than one term, but it has been a council decision to place the votes.
Kate, can I, Kate, can I ask you to just refrain yourself and let, have other people give a chance to ask questions? Can I have the next presenter, please?
Sorry, Eleanor Link. Barry Wan from Minnehaha. Barb and Bruce Donald. Yes, did you want to come forward? Thank you. Eric Dahl. Sharon Yakel. Lynn Stevenson. Cory Jones.
I'm Cory from Hiawatha. I see two different divisions here of properties. We have one that is at sixteen thousand dollars, and we have another of units where it's twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now, if I had a vote, I'd vote to be on the other side of the street. I don't understand why the voting here is combined when we're voting for two different things. We're voting for a sewage system at different prices. If you check the numbers, you'll find that the majority of fours are on the cheaper side and the against are the expensive side. Just an observation.
Excuse me, you were wondering why the prices are different and why it wasn't done initially?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I said why we were voting together.
That's true, why you're voting together, and I'm gonna ask, see if Administration can answer that question.
I mean, the prices being different is one question, and I think it's been asked. I don't need the lift station, but I'm going to pay for it, so I want to know why my opinion doesn't add in the vote.
So the reason the votes are combined is because the LID is combined as a single project?
So should the prices be combined to be all the same? If we're all combined, if I get it, you're stating we're all big one happy group, one happy lid. Why is there a difference in us? And the minute you place that difference on us, you're going to get two different types of votes. And the cheaper one might sway so that we go forward with one that the expensive side, people can't afford it. So I get it, you're all one lid. You should be all one price, you should be all one vote.
Okay, thank you. Can I have the next presenter, please?
Thank you. I'll just mention Oris. I apologize, I didn't see your hand. Did you wish to come?
All I said is, anything I was gonna say has been covered, so I don't want to waste people's time, so I'm good.
Ron and Heather Lewick registered. Nicholas Klovchuk. Carla Link. Did you wish to speak? I apologize, Vitali Panskavich. Dana Mirowicz. Niget Do Metkaff on Evelyn. Do you wish to speak? Donna Loschuk. Did you wish to speak?
No, like, sorry, I just think people are upset, it's still my question.
Keith Loschuk. All right, that is the people who have registered this evening, oh, moment. Dave Turney.
Excuse me, my little horse tonight. I'm Dave Turney, live in Kennebec. I have one question for sure, and possibly another one. It's regarding to the voting. If you don't vote, you don't reach out to the line and all that. Like, you don't send an email, you don't come down there. How is that vote taken, that non-vote? Is that a yes or no, or is it considered an abstention?
Do you have more than one question, or is that your only question?
Well, it depends on the answer to this.
Okay, I'll ask Administration to respond to that.
Well, what's the, hold on a minute. We have a democracy here, and you guys have votes in council, right? So using that process, please answer my question.
Yeah, only, only objection, only objectors are registered as, or not registered, only objectors are registered as against. A non-vote is not considered an objection. So the objections are registered. Am I sure, it was unclear or, oh, sorry.
So how many people?
Perhaps I could, I could clarify. So in, in the minutes when we represent the public hearing, we will list those who have registered in support, we will list those who have registered against, and we will list those who's registered for information. If you've not done any of those, you're not included in the list.
So that means if you didn't vote, yea or nay, you're considered an abstention, abstained?
I don't know that I would use that terminology, but you've neither.
Well, it's the same, it's a democracy, that's how votes are tallied in the democracy.
Yeah, you wouldn't be included in the tally, so that.
By me?
You wouldn't, a person who doesn't, doesn't, you don't declare their support or opposition.
How many homes are there?
There's one hundred and fourteen properties.
So we had one hundred and fourteen votes, yea or nay?
Well, it's, it's not really a vote, it's registering supporter opposition.
Call it what you want.
Yeah, so if you've registered, you will be listed, and if you haven't registered, you won't be.
Okay, so that means, so I'm just trying to get this so everybody here understands the process totally.
Right, and everyone has until the end of the public hearing to register. So if there's anyone here who hasn't, there's still the opportunity until the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Okay?
So here's my second question. Why was this, was everybody told that this was a process? I, I, you know, there's all these little fine details. Mr. Wardrop has said a couple of times that we're concerned about the cost going forward, and that we might lose this money. You called me the other day to tell me that that won't happen. This is all, so that's why, ask exactly how this vote was put in place. You understand what I'm saying?
I think what he's trying to say is, if all one hundred and fourteen people say yea or nay, we need seventy-six people for a sixty-six percent reject. But if out of those one hundred and fourteen, if fourteen do not vote yea or nay, does that reduce our sixty-six percent to sixty-six people?
No.
If it doesn't, then that means anybody that does not register as a yea or nay is a yes.
That's not, that's, is that, is that the answer? You guys aren't saying?
If you don't vote at all, your vote is considered a yes, correct, hundred percent.
It's not considered an opposition.
It's not considered an opposition.
So then how can that, 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 then the fact that we have a democracy here and not a majority? If you don't vote, you abstain, your vote, you're not counted.
Yeah, the, the, the way that, my, my, my understanding, and lady, please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is, is the way the act is written is an LI cannot proceed if more than two-thirds object. More than two-thirds of the, those affected by the LID object. And if I understand that's how it's written, so what, the, the, that's, that's the way it is, that's the way the Municipal Act is structured.
So why wasn't that knowledge forthcoming at the very beginning?
I think that has been on all the presentations about the whatever.
No, no, when you started, when you started sending that stuff in the mail, you know. I have this, I, I used to be proud to live here. I used to be a member of the fire department. Our family has a street named after it for working hard for this municipality. But once you come under the thumb of the way you guys do things, it sucks. It's not criminal violence, it just, you just don't give a shit.
Okay, any more objectors?
Yes, I'll keep, Raymond Beavis. Valentina Russell and Dwayne Sharet. Dawn and Liz Cooper. Michael Albert. James Falter, Jacqueline McDonald. Dave and Angela Meek. Glenn Wright. Stacy and Paul Carpenko. Mitchell and Jessica Holt. Maria Santos. Cory Jones and William Bird. Susan Ward. Matthew Boyko, Melissa Collins. Ag and Terry Reed. Doug Hilderman. Dave, I apologize, Dave, you've spoken. Drexler and Jara Castro. Danica Skripnik. Andrea Wall. Linda Wilkie, I apologize, I think that was on here. Ken Smierski. Robert Didik. Rhonda Krocowski. Stuart Simpson. Diane Blahie, David Holland. Win Blahie. Representative from the Royal Manitoba Yacht Club, Darren Carlin. Gagin and Prabhishaman Ram Gil from Hiawatha. Penny and Ron Kurian. Stan Pascal. Daniel Jack. Ernest and Judith Clone. Jim Bell. Would you like to speak? Irina Denika. Lynn Burdette. Michelle Moise, Devon Getteron. Jerry and Linda Bennett. Kara Klovchuk. Curtis or Kennedy Link. Brian Lebowiki. Brendan Jones. Sharon, Rachel, and Matthew Church. Isabel and Jeffrey Anderson. Jean-Paul Gerton. Yes? Did you wish to register?
Uh, one. One, it's one household.
I would need your name.
Sure. My name is Laurel Vicford.
I'm sorry, Laurel?
Laurel, yeah. L-A-U-R-A-L. I've just sort of mentioned over the course of this evening that the municipality hasn't necessarily taken into consideration the funding for our streets based on that the funding is applied to all of West St. Paul. I'm just wondering if the environmental impact of some of the houses that unfold are draining sewage into the ditches and stuff in our area, whether that waste is being considered, that that affects the entirety of West St. Paul, not just our area specifically.
You repeat the question, please?
Sure. So over the course of this evening, it's been said that there are people who are not disposing of sewage in the way that they should necessarily be, so that contamination is getting into our water systems, which is the whole point of doing this. But that funding for West St. Paul and stuff that's in the budgets is for all of West St. Paul. But the sewage getting into the water system does affect all of West St. Paul. So I'm just wondering if that's been taken into consideration.
Well, I'll let our CEO answer that question.
Yeah, it, it's, that's a different issue. What that is, is, that is, that is a violation
I can appreciate that, yes.
of how a home is functioning according to, you know.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we're doing that, but I'm just.
And, no, and, and so in that circumstance, the cost of rectifying that, and the cost of rectifying that immediately should be placed entirely on the homeowner
Absolutely.
that is doing it.
Yeah.
And so that type of situation shouldn't be occurring at all.
Agreed.
And if it does occur, the cost of rectifying that should be one hundred percent on that homeowner.
Right.
The, the, the purpose of installing a sewer system in the neighborhood isn't to stop sewage from running down ditches as, as is being purported.
No, but, yes.
The purpose is, is to become compliant.
Right.
And, and allow for as tanks, holding tanks, and septic fields no longer are, are need repair or replacement can then contact to a sewer system. But the purpose of installing the sewer system itself isn't to stop current violators. Current violators should be addressed now at that day, so, so it's, it's, it's really a separate issue in that those violations should be corrected immediately and at one hundred percent of the cost of the homeowner. It's the installation of the, of the sewer system itself is forward thinking. It's not the here and now.
Well, I'm just making an argument for saying that like, if they're not complying as it is, as it stands, and then to push for our area twenty-seven thousand dollars to run a line, and then, like, why would they do that?
The, 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 yeah.
That's, I'm just trying to say like, the environmental impact of the entire community, not just our specific streets.
Yeah, that, that, that should not be occurring and should be corrected immediately.
I'm not saying it is, I'm just like, it's sort of been implied throughout the course of this evening that that is happening.
Yeah, and, and I guess what I'm trying to say is certainly that's an affront to the community.
Yes.
And it's certainly an item that should be addressed immediately, and it's certainly an item that should be addressed immediately by the homeowner now. By installing, by installing a sewer by installing a sewer system, as these situations become imminent, properties will have an opportunity to connect to a sewer system as opposed to making expensive repairs to their septic tank and septic field only to have to retire them prematurely.
Right. But if it's cost inhibitive, then just all around, if it's cost inhibitive, what's?
Well, if, if, if you live in a home that can't manage its own waste because its holding tank is past its useful life and its septic field is, is past its useful life, it's your responsibility to correct that. And if, if you're not able to correct that, then, then.
So just on average, if I had to, could anybody answer me this question? If I had to put a new holding tank into my property tomorrow, what was it going to cost me? I don't think it's going to cost me twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, we, we had some, we had some estimates on that. Um, did Stan, Stan, can I, do you have some, some on the last, I think if I recall, I had some, was it in a fifteen thousand?
Twelve, twelve to fifteen thousand.
I think, I think that.
And what's the longevity of a, of a septic tank? Fifteen years, twenty years? If, just, just ask you. So I could replace that tank twice, like, so getting me another thirty years before I'm, for just the line.
You also have to empty the tank and pay for emptying the tank, right?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more?
Tara Walker. John and Ashley Tavares. Bruce Henley. Angela and Charlie Olivier. Dale and Michelle Assaly. Larry and Stefania Karpiek. Shawna Paulaway. Chris Enz. Kim Zerbin. And Mr. Mayor, those are who I have signed in and, and registered against. Is there anyone else present who wishes to register against? We'll, we'll just, I'll, I'll just keep going.
You, you already had your chance to speak, so we're just going to let our MLA, our MLO go through the rest of the list.
We also had an additional person sign in for Victor Bento. Did you wish to speak? That's everyone I have.
Excellent. Okay, so is there anyone else in the audience that has not had a chance to speak that would like to speak? Either for, against, or information? Okay, I hear none. So I guess that will conclude our public hearing this evening. I will close the public hearing. Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality hereby close the public hearing and resume a special meeting of council. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Campbell moves. Can I have a second or, councilor seconds it. Can I have a call for vote? All in favor? Any opposed? None. Carried. So the next on the agenda is. So council has decided that they will not vote on this resolution, on this resolution, on this hearing tonight. There are some questions that came up that we want to look at. There are some other things that we need to address and we will notify you when we will be able to vote on this hearing. So we will go now into a journey in the special meeting. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stand adjourned at eight thirty-four PM. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Shetty moves. Councilor Patrin seconds it. Any comments, questions? Can I call for the vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Carried.